All right, good evening, everyone. Welcome to the October already. October 2025 is only Board of Appeals meeting, Town of Carmel. The board members' names are on the dais in front of you. We have Mike Carnazar, our code enforcement officer, and Greg Fullshetty, town council, with us this evening. The way we operate is we will ask you to come up. I'll swear you in. Whoever's going to speak, unless you're of council, I will swear you in. We will hear your case. We will poll the board for any questions or comments, and then we'll open it up to the public for any questions or comments. Once we close a case, there's no further input on that case whatsoever, please, so let's keep that in mind. At the end of the evening, we will adjudicate and decide on the cases, so if you want to stick around for your decision, you're welcome to. Otherwise, you can catch it on the channels.
1495.
2495. Yep. And, or you can call the building department tomorrow and find out the results. But I don't think, we only have five applicants this night, so you might want to stick around. All right, would all please stand and join me for the pledge of allegiance?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, liberate, and justice for all.
All right, the first case this evening is for Mark Anthony, variation of section 156-15, seeking a use variance to permit three residential apartments in a single-family zone. The property is located at 592 Long Pond Road, Maupac, New York, and its tax map 53.15-1-15. So the code requires or allows a one-family home. What's existing or provided is a two-family with a garage and apartment over it, and a variance required, variance required is the applicant seeks the use variance for, to legalize three living units, two-family use in main house with garage apartment. All right, and this evening is Frank, you'll represent, state your name and address for the record.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Frank J. Smith III, Law Office of Schilling &amp; Smith, 1961 Route 6, Carmel, New York, on behalf of the applicant, Mark Anthony, as trustee of the Mark Anthony Revocable Living Trust. Mr. Anthony is joined with me this evening. The property is located at 592 Long Pond Road, Maupac, New York. It is known as tax map number 53.15-1-15. It consists of a two-family dwelling with a detached garage that contains an apartment on the second story. The parcel is approximately .74 acres and is located in the town's low-density residential zoning district. The relief requested this evening is a use variance to permit three residential units where only single-family is permitted. Prior to the meeting, in support of the application, this office provided the board a completed ZBA application, photos of the premises, applicant affidavit and support, memorandum of law, a supplemental memorandum of law, a supplemental applicant statement, and an affirmation from a professional title attorney as to covenants and restrictions. First, a brief history. The applicant grew up and lived in Maupac for many years and continues to be a local business owner. In 2020, he began looking for a property to invest in for rental purposes. The subject property was purchased in October of 2020. At the time of purchase, the property was marketed as having three units, and the premises was in the same configuration as it is today. That is, two residential units in the main house, along with a single residential unit located above the detached garage. During the course of the transaction, the applicant obtained a municipal report, and that report contained a legal predate letter stating the premises was a legally predated six-family. The applicant relied on his retained counsel to confirm that the three units were legal, and the predate letter covered as much. The cost of ownership of the premises is roughly $5,400 per month, or $64,700 annually. This cost includes mortgage, tax, insurance, as well as management fees, lawn maintenance, pool maintenance, home heating oil, and other necessary repairs and maintenance. There are three rental units in the premises. The main unit, which is currently vacant, ordinarily rents for $2,500 per month, generating $30,000 annually. The rear apartment in the main house rents for $1,922 per month, generating $23,604 annually. The apartment over the garage rents for $1,525 per month, generating $18,300 annually. Total, roughly $71,300 and change per year. Losing the opportunity to rent any one of the three units would result in the property operating at a loss. During the course of this application, the main tenant in the main unit subsequently left. The $2,500 per month that that unit ordinarily generates is now gone, and the property is operating at a loss. In February of this year, the applicant met with the building department, and the legal predate letter was amended. Now, after believing that the premises was legally predated based upon the prior letter that stated six units, the predate letter was modified to permit three units. That predate letter would have adequately covered the premises as it sits. Thereafter, the applicant received a violation for more than one unit in a single-family zone, and that's why we're here tonight. Prior to addressing the use variance criteria, I would like to spend a couple of moments addressing covenants and restrictions that were raised by an opposition letter that came prior to last month's meeting. In support of our position, we provided the board with an affirmation from a professional title attorney, Ms. Georgianne Berte of Premier Abstract, that confirms that the covenants and restrictions represented in the opposition letter do not encumber Mr. Anthony's parcel. There are covenants and restrictions on that parcel, but they are not the same as the ones enumerated in the opposition letter. Furthermore, the question of covenants and restrictions is immaterial to the board's review of a use variance analysis. The Court of Appeals, New York State's highest appellate court, has routinely ruled that the use of land under a zoning ordinance versus use of land under a restrictive covenant are, quote, "separate and distinct matters." The Court of Appeals, in a case called Chambers v. Old Stone Hill Road Associates, further opined that, quote, "A zoning approval constitutes only a conclusion that the proposed comports with applicable zoning regulations. It should neither affect nor be affected by the existence of a private restrictive covenant," end quote. The Department of State, in an opinion letter, also states that, quote, "The decision in Chambers should serve as a reminder to local governments that their land use approval powers are not in any way affected by private restrictive covenants." As the board is aware, there are four criterias that must be met in order to grant a use variance. The first is that the property cannot yield a reasonable return. The second is that the plight of the owner is due to unique circumstances. Third, if granted, the use will not alter the essential character of the neighborhood. And lastly, that the hardship was not self-created. For the following reasons, I respectfully contend that the applicant satisfies this criteria. First, the applicant cannot realize a reasonable return. As previously presented, costs associated with the mortgage, insurance, taxes, upkeep, and maintenance, and repairs total roughly $5,400 monthly, or $64,700 annually. In order to meet or exceed this amount, the premises would require that all three units be rented. If one rental unit were to be disbanded, the premises would be operating at a loss. For example, the property does not have a tenant in the main unit currently. Mr. Anthony is apprehensive to put a new tenant in there with the uncertainty of this application, and doesn't want to move somebody in just to get rid of them in the event that we do not prevail. Assuming he lost that rental unit permanently, he would receive $3,447 in rent monthly, which would put him at a near $2,000 per month loss. A different example would be using the unit above the garage. Assuming the two house units were to be rented at the current rate, and the above-garage unit, which is the least expensive of the three, were lost, the applicant would raise $4,422 per month, which represents a loss of close to $1,000 per month. These examples represent the necessity of retaining all three units, and as such, I argue that he cannot realize a reasonable return. Second is whether the plight of the owner is due to unique circumstances. In this instance, I argue that the circumstances are unique. When the applicant purchased the property, he relied on counsel to ensure that the units he was purchasing were legal. At the time of purchase, the predate letter issued by the building department recognized more units than what were there. The property was not expanded. It was just thought that that letter would cover the units as they exist. This was Mr. Anthony's first rental property, and as such, he relied on the representations made in making the decision to purchase the investment. Purchasing with the understanding of legality makes this unique in the sense that we are now seeking to legalize something that he thought was legal to begin with. I contend that the particular circumstance is unique to this property and to this particular property owner. Third is whether, if granted, there would be a negative impact to the neighborhood. In this case, there would be no negative impact. It is a residential use in a residential zone. It is not entirely inconsistent with what the town intended, but it's obviously not permitted. In addition, the current configuration of two rental units in the main house, along with the rental unit above the garage, has been in existence for many years. During the time of its existence, I am unaware of any grievances or complaints related to its use as a three-unit rental, and as the board is aware, there was one letter of opposition. For those reasons, there would be no negative change to the character of the neighborhood. Lastly is whether the hardship was self-created. In this case, it wasn't. As previously stated, the applicant intended to purchase the property with three residential units, and at the time of purchase, he believed that they were legally covered under the initial predate letter. Thereafter, that predate letter was amended to state that the three units were legally pre-existing. That amendment covered the condition as it presently exists and was further relied on by the applicant. Following the predate letter's amendment is when the property was issued a violation. The applicant did not create the issue and is merely seeking to legalize what he thought was already legal. As such, the hardship was not self-created. Based upon these reasons, I argue that the applicant has met the use variance criteria, and respectfully request that this board grant the variance as requested. Thank you for the opportunity to present. Myself and Mr. Anthony are available for any questions.
Frank, do we know how long it's been a three property, or a three-unit property, prior to your client purchasing?
It's difficult to discern. There's really nothing in the records that relate to it being used as a three. It was in that configuration at the time that it was purchased. We do have a neighbor who's here in support, who was in the house, and he can explain that there was two in the main house for a period of-
Like a past tenant or a neighbor, I guess, would suffice someone who-
Yeah, and I will say that our office tried to contact predecessors in title to try and establish this, because, as you know, I would much rather try to find a legally predated use as opposed to ask for a use variance, but we couldn't establish it with any certainty.
Previous owner got a variance to allow him to put the law office above the garage, if I remember correctly, right? Wasn't it something like that?
Yeah.
And he came in front of this board, but I don't know exactly the year. It's probably on your application.
It should be on the application, yeah.
I don't have the application, because it's-
Except it's not. It says there's no previous appeals on the property at all.
There were two. One for the garage being too close to the property line, and one for the law office above. I don't remember the lawyer's name, but it did happen several years ago, while I was here, the last 30 years.
I think it was 2005, around there, but I don't know with certainty.
Five I wasn't here yet.
So it was sometime after that.
Could have happened in my tenure. I just, I don't remember what I did 10 minutes ago.
Same, same.
So, Mike, I have a question for you. So if this was to be granted, would it have to be deemed a three-family home? Because if it's an accessory apartment, doesn't the person have to live there?
If there's three units, it's three family, yes.
It would be a three-family, so then it would get assessed as a three-family, okay.
Yep.
Which, right now, it's a one-family with an accessory, so it's going to change significantly-
And it's a very, it will definitely change with the assessor, and it's also a very interesting assessment card. It shows that the accessory apartment showed up upon Mr. Anthony's purchase, but previously in the chain, it did have a different code that would relate to multi-purpose, multi-use. So I'm not sure what the assessor had done then, but that's how it stands now.
Did you, you didn't look at the old card? Of what, the old cards had nothing?
It didn't say anything specifically related to the use, yeah. And then if you look at, the county has this new system. I'm not sure if you looked at it for their tax map. It does a pretty good list of it, and it also shows the code. I think, you know, 200 is a regular single-family residence.
210.
210. It was, it was previously listed as a 280, and I could give you the definition, because I looked at-
That's not the family yet?
Yeah.
It's a 215, according to what you submitted.
It's 215 now. It was previously 210, but there was use as 280, which my understanding is like a multi-use, multi-purpose distinction, I guess they would call it. And again, as you guys are aware, the assessor doesn't check with the building department to make sure what they're assessing on is legal or not.
Is that true?
That is very true, and not a true real truth.
Our resident, all right, John, you have questions?
Yeah, hi, counselor. May I ask, in 2021, your client purchased a property, and what were, what's the mortgage? And what is the terms of that mortgage?
So just to be clear, I know that in the affidavit, it said 2021. That was a deed transfer from Mr. Anthony as an individual to the trust.
To the trust, yeah.
Correct. So it was purchased in 2020, but you want to hop up and you're going to have to swear in.
Good evening. State your name and address for the record, and I'll swear in.
Mark Anthony, 24608 Oakview Place, Ponte Gordo, Florida, 33980. Right hand, my other right hand.
You swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth, so help you God.
Swear to God.
Go ahead, sir.
So the question was, how much is monthly mortgage? Are you looking for amount or monthly or?
The total amount that was the loan, you know, from-
The size of the loan when you purchased.
Oh, what else? 480,000, roughly.
That's like a 30-year, a 15-year?
Correct.
How many years are left?
25.
Okay, all right, good. No, thank you.
Sorry?
Thank you.
Absolutely.
When did you say that the predate letter was amended?
The predate letter was amended in February of this year. There is a strikeout of the six. It states three with the initials M.C., which are believed to be Mr. Carnazar, and it says 21825.
I didn't want to leave that in the file with the six on it, obviously, for obvious reasons.
All right, guys down here?
You both answer my, ask my questions.
All right.
Does the use conflict with the association?
So that was the covenants and restrictions that we talked about earlier. So there is a provision that says that it shall be used as a single-family residence. However, covenants and restrictions do not come into consideration when it comes to being in compliance with the local zoning ordinance. Also, there's a provision of real property actions and proceedings law, section 2001, that states that the statute of limitations for someone to challenge the breach of a covenant and restriction is either two years from the construction of the item going up, or two years upon it being used in a way inconsistent with that covenant restriction.
And just for context, we had a case where there was a covenant restriction. We didn't deal with that, if I remember correctly, because it's a civil matter, not a zoning board matter.
My understanding it's civil.
Right.
But it's something you should take into consideration.
In consideration, but it's not the, right.
Mike, would, do we have the file? Would it have when that garage was built, or that office above the garage was built?
Yeah, the garage was built in the last 15, 20 years.
Yeah, so it's been in the neighborhood. It's not out of character. I mean, I remember seeing that garage, you know, driving around that road.
Yeah, but then they came to put the office above, and I don't think they ever put the office above. But the lawyer came in front of the board to get that.
Okay.
My recollection is that the garage was built by two predecessors entitled. There was a guy parking tow trucks or something there at the time. Yeah.
That sounds familiar, yeah.
And I can't recall if he got a variance to permit the tow trucks, or if it was just related to the garage, and he meant, and there was neighbor opposition that the tow trucks were parked there?
I think the condition included no parking of, you could park a empty tow truck, but not a tow truck with a vehicle on it or behind it or anything like that, but I think that's what it was.
Yeah, it's going back, because I think the issue was that the tow truck company's phone number was the landline at the house. Yeah, and there was questions whether or not, is the business being run out of here, or is he just driving his trucks home? So that was not the owner that we bought from, but before that owner.
All right, do anybody want to hear from the neighbor?
Yeah, why not? It's good to have it on record, since we have-
Just your experience. State your name and address for the record.
Hi, I'm Joe Raytano, 20 Hillside Drive, Maupac, New York.
Hey, raise your right hand. Swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth, so help you God.
I'm sorry.
Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth, so help you God?
Yes.
All right, just, I remind everyone, please speak into the microphones. This meeting is being recorded for minutes, so.
Okay.
So you witnessed this, this three, or?
Yes. He's been a great neighbor, and I have no problem with issuing this permit or whatever.
No, I get that, but are you aware of the history of the property? Has it been a two, two-unit main house and one unit over the garage for as long as, how long? Can, how long can you attest to that?
How long do you remember?
I've been living there for 40 years.
All right, so how long are you aware of it being three separate units?
Five years. I'm not exactly sure on that. Just, you know, Mark's a friend of mine.
Okay, so within your tenure of your friendship with Mark, it's always been a three?
Yes, it's been excellent.
What about prior?
I'm sorry, what?
What about prior to your friendship with Mark? Do you remember it being three?
No.
Okay. Anybody have any other questions for?
Yeah, so, Joe, you said he's a great neighbor, which I bet he is.
Yes.
But he doesn't live there.
No.
So the tenants have been great neighbors?
Yeah, there's no problems ever. I mean, yes, it's quiet.
Tenants, good.
Okay, anybody have any other questions?
No.
All right, at this point, Frank, do you have anything else?
See if there's anybody in your audience who wants.
I will.
No, that's him, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Okay, and at this point, I'll open it up to the public, if anyone wishes to be heard on this application. Sir, do me a favor. If you come up to speak, just write your name when you're done speaking. Write your name, contact number, address, and all that stuff on that piece of paper on the dais.
All right, just speak into the microphone, please. State your name and address for the record.
My name is David Kaplan.
You can turn it down to your mouth if you prefer.
My name is David Kaplan.
Okay, what's your address?
My legal address is 8 Mary A. Lane in Delmar, New York.
And raise your right hand. Swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth, so help you God.
I do.
Go ahead.
My family's been to Maupac for 50 years, where it's 70 Hillside Drive. I'm not a lawyer like Frank, so-
Sir, you gotta, you gotta speak into the microphone, please.
I'm not a lawyer like Frank, so I will use Helene Kummel's letter to address some of the issues that I'd like to address, and then from there, there are a couple of other issues I'd like to address.
Sure.
Helene Kummel is the neighbor, and she's against this granting the zoning. She's in Washington, DC today. I don't know what she's doing, but-
But just for the record, she submitted two letters, just so you-
Yes, and I'm reading for the letter because I'm going to go from there.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, look, do me a favor. Turn the microphone down to your mouth, and you can look down, yeah, and speak into it at the same time.
So first, I'd like to point out the garage is quite close to the side lot line. The deed requires 25 feet. Indeed, the distance between the side of the garage and the pavement and pleasant load varies along its lays from only 19 to 22 feet. Well, Helene's no surveyor, and she doesn't have access to the maps. And why is this important? Because we are originally designed to be a single-use, single-family neighborhood on approximately a half hour, half-acre plot.
All right, but it's not out of character for that neighborhood, or for most of the neighborhoods in the town, but go ahead.
The concern is, if the zoning board grants this variance, and that variance, and another variance, the neighborhood will change.
Not always necessarily. Go ahead.
Not necessarily. 1927 map of the neighborhood. It shows fairly wide roads. I happen to know the word road is 30 feet, 33 feet wide in the original plans. In her letter, she says 18, 19 to 20 feet. It's actually, the house is much closer to the road than that. Here's the map. From the roadway improvement plan for the Long Pond Association. Would you like to see it? It shows that the road doesn't cover the 33 feet. Forgive me, I'm trying to be precise.
Are you talking about the-
That, that house.
The garage?
The garage is almost on the road.
But I think they came for a variance, and they got that granted to build that.
That variance exists.
So that already exists, so that's legal at this point, so the building-
And the variance said they would put it where?
Where, whatever they got approved for.
I believe this is a lot closer to the road.
But this is about a use variance.
It's probably like 10 feet from the road.
So we're more talking about, can there be an apartment in that building? We're not talking about the building itself? That is already illegal and allowed under the law.
You may look at it as talking about an apartment in the building. I'm looking into talking about a neighborhood.
All right, but Will's trying to tell you it's use. It's about the use, not the actual layout of the structures and where they exist, and that's to my point that-
And we would like to limit the usage to the two families- And we would like to limit the usage to the two families that are in there now and not add a third family. Talking about changing the neighborhood, I mean, how many families would want to add houses on their lots?
I don't think anyone added a house, but go ahead.
Okay.
And again, it's difficult, although the applicant seems to have met all the criteria to obtain a use variance. It's a very stringent, um, criteria to do so. And so the fact that we're here and it looks like he's met it, it may be difficult for others to do the same.
Okay.
Keep that in mind as well.
Yeah, each case is judged on its own merits, basically.
Each case is on its own merits.
And there's different circumstances and hardships.
Correct.
Okay.
All right.
And there are deeds.
Okay, the lawyer, counselor made that point that the deed is not, you know...
The deed doesn't mean anything?
Not held to the covenant deed, if that's what you're talking about.
There's a deed from Maye Pack. Excuse me. The original...
Long Pond Associates?
Yeah, Long Pond Associates.
No, not from the Long Pond Association.
That's what it says in the letter. You're right, Mike.
It says, "Shall be so restricted to, limited to the type of building they may be corrected on. No more than one single-family private residence for one family on each half-acre land." This is from September nineteen thirty-eight.
So I don't know if this is a question maybe for counsel, but if the association has issue with this, could they go after him?
Yeah, absolutely. The covenant was in favor of a group of individuals.
So, I mean, we could... We're looking at this from a zoning perspective, but if you are part of a homeowners' association that has this written into your bylaws or whatever you're quoting...
It is not a homeowners' association. It's in the original deed from the Maye Pack Falls Park Incorporated.
Regardless, the case in front of us is just for the use variance itself, not a deed or covenants that are private to that property and to that association or that tax map.
Right, that's a civil matter.
Well, Helene feels that it would...
Okay, we're in receipt of her letter, if that's what you're discussing.
I'm trying to move on to the next topic.
So I'm part of the board of the Long Pond Association. And this is what Mr. Anthony said to me, said to Jill, Jill Sanders McDermott, who's on the board. As you may or may not know, I live out of state. I purchased 592 Long Pond Roads about four years ago as an investment property.
He's been in his right to do so.
I'm sorry?
Anybody's with the rights to buy a property as investment.
Yes, everyone has the right to a property investment. And if it goes sour, not as anticipated, does everyone else have to pay the price?
As far as Mark Anthony understood, he was sold that this was an existing three-unit property. So he bought it as an investment property.
Because if that wasn't there, he could never get this use variance. That's been established.
And I'm sure he would have never bought the property if he knew that this was the situation.
Uh, that depends. Counsel, I don't know his counsel at the time, but that's not my business. That was his business, his responsibility.
Yeah, and he acted upon that information accordingly.
He writes in this letter, "I began the process a year ago. Paperwork originally in my file was missing. Clarification was approved as a six-family dwelling, three, and I only want three, along with an amendment of the billing. Department, it could be a three-unit multifamily property. All previous papers were gone." What papers? Does he have proof?
Do you have proof that they weren't?
That's a good point. Do I have proof that somebody's telling a good story? Maybe.
Is that letter that you're reading a letter that was written by Mr. Anthony?
Yes, it's written to Jill.
To the board, I presume?
It's written to the board. Jill sent it over to me.
Which again is consistent with what he's testified here today, and his lawyer has stated as well.
Well, it may be consistent, but the aim or purpose may not be.
Can I have the context of this letter? Like, what, why was he writing it and who was it written to?
It's written to Jill Sands McDermott. She's been on the board of the LPA for many years, and that's probably the person that he knew to write to. She's in the community.
But, but why was he penning this letter to her?
He was looking for support from the board. I'm on the board, and I'm not supporting it.
Okay.
Again, that's a board matter. That's not a zoning board matter.
Right, but I live there, and I'm expressing an opinion.
Okay, that's fine. Do you have any more points to make?
One, if I do not get the zoning, I will be forced to sell, significantly affecting my retirement domestic. Zillo said that he bought the house at $447,000. It's got the house now at $635,000. I doubt he'll be adversely affected by the sale of the building.
Nobody's got a crystal ball. I wish I did, so... All right.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Anybody else wish to be heard on this application? All right, I'll look for a motion to close the public hearing.
I'm moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you. All right, our next case this evening is number two, Fernando Medina for variation of section 156-19A 1A, seeking to keep a six-foot fence in front of the house. The property is located at 44 Kelly Road, Carmel, New York, and is tax map thirty-five, fifty-five, point fifteen, dash, one, dash, nineteen. The code requires or allows four-foot front, and what's provided is six feet, so a variance of two feet is being sought.
They're not here again, John.
John, this is the...
Those are the ones that walked in when we were...
I see nobody coming up. I'm like, is, could it be happening again? Yeah, with twenty kids.
Yes, they've been late.
I wish I knew that before I read all that. That's okay.
She's not here.
Thank you. All right, new applications we'll move on with. Application for Donna Vignona Palmiero for a variation of section 156-9, seeking an area variance for permission to retain existing shed and existing gazebo. Property is located at 52 Baldwin Lane, Mahopac, New York, and is tax map fifty-five, sixty-five, point ten, dash, two, dash, two, seven. The code requires and allows for the ten, ten feet for the rear pertaining to the shed. What's existing is 1.8 feet, so a variance of 8.2 feet are required. And for the rear of the shed... Oh, it's corner lot, that's right, two corners. What's existing is point eleven feet, and a variance of 9.89 feet is required or sought, being sought. And then for the gazebo, it's a ten-foot rear is the setback, what the code requires. It's a zero provided, and a ten-foot variance is being sought. Are they not here either?
No, who's she going to see?
I was gonna say thanks again. I'm getting my speaking voice practiced here. Either or, just turn it down to your mouth so we can pick you up for minutes. State your name and address for the record.
Donna Palmiero. My home address is 71 McManus Road, South Patterson, New York.
Okay.
Hello, everybody, and thank you.
Let me swear again.
Oh, okay.
Raise your right hand. Swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth, so help you God.
I do.
Thank you. All right, bring us up to speed here.
So this is probably very clear. This is my family's house. My father built it starting in nineteen sixty. And I believe they got the C of O and moved in in nineteen sixty-two. He built the house himself. He built the shed. He built the gazebo. By hand with my four older brothers mixing cement and helping him. On the two, it's a corner lot. The two properties that are budding up to it, there were no houses at the time. It was, we were the Maye Pack originals, the McCassie originals. It was just all...
The first house was in Cassie, right?
Correct. It was just all wooded land. The house on the right side of the property, I think it was built in the seventies at some point, and Simone's to the other side was probably built in the late seventies. They never, I don't know of them having any problem with the gazebo.
So these two structures were there soon after the house was built?
Correct. I even have some recollection. I was maybe four years old at that point, okay? Don't start counting my age.
All right, all right. Give me a pass.
My dad came to some sort of meeting here a couple of times, and Mr. Mullay was the...
Building inspector.
Building inspector. And there was discussion about the, what we're calling now the shed. I think at that time, they may have called it the doghouse because my dog actually, the dog actually lived in there, and it had heat, and it has a way in and out that the dog was able to go into the stone part and come out in the fence part.
Did your father a mason?
He was a carpenter.
All right, 'cause it looked like it was nice masonry. That the shed has been there for a real long time.
Forever.
All the brothers had to do that.
As well as the gazebo, it's got a mason base.
Right, it's a bloodline.
Good structure.
Of doing work.
All right, let me ask you this. Is, what would be the cost to relocate both structures? Probably in the thousands, right?
Yeah, I mean, to take that shed down, it's all stone.
Yeah.
It's all stone that was dug up or carried in from some of it. Quite honestly, with the streets in the Bronx under the L, and they started digging it up. And my father was working construction jobs down there and bringing the stone up to build the shed. You know?
All right.
I am now in control of the house, and I have to make some decisions. And I have been told that if it went, if I put it up for sale, I can't sell it.
Right.
Until you clear this up.
Right.
And that's why I'm here. And, you know, I'm trying to do the right thing without there being a great financial hardship.
All right, let me ask you this. There's no other property you can purchase to make it into conformance because you got, your land locked, your corner lot. The structures have been there for forty, fifty years at least, if not more.
Sixty-something years.
All right, so I'm sure if the neighbors had complaints, they'd be here. I don't know if anyone's here. We'll ask that next, but... So, you know, we're establishing a record. You can't really, there's no property you can purchase. It would be costly to move these, right? Within the thousands, would you agree?
I would imagine just to haul the stone away, it's a small fortune.
That's a lot of labor.
Never mind getting the machinery that's gonna dig up the whole lawn as it passes to bring out the stone.
Yeah, I'm sure it's built to survive a nuclear holocaust.
It looks like it's inherent to the property. All right, board members, any questions or comments?
Do you know, Donna, if the roof is okay on that shed?
Actually, it looks, I was out there the other night. It looks like a new roof.
I don't know of water coming in it. I think it's getting aged, you know?
It's, that, I was out there the other night, that roof is like brand-new. The roof on the gazebo is a little older, but it's still in good shape.
I have no further questions.
Nothing.
Guys down here. All right, does anybody in the public wish to be heard on this application? Questions or comments? Okay.
Thank you.
I'll look for a motion to close the public hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, you're welcome. Application number four, Susan Caputo for a variation of section 156-9, seeking an area variance for permission to retain existing shed. Property is located at 216 Center Drive, Mahopac, and is tax map seventy-four point three five, dash, one, dash, eleven. The code requires or allows ten feet to the side, five feet is existing, so a variance of five feet is being sought. And then for the rear, the code allows ten feet. What's existing is 1.5, so a variance of 8.5 is existing. All right, good evening. State your name and address for the record.
Good evening. Susan Caputo, 216 Center Drive, Maye Pack, New York.
Just turn the mic up to your mouth, please.
Okay.
All right, raise your right hand. Swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth, so help you God.
I do.
Okay, how long has the shed been there?
So I've been there for a little over six and a half years, and the shed was there when I purchased the house. So I was just asking to keep the shed instead of just removing the cement block that it's sitting on as well as the shed.
All right, I was there the other night, too. It's back up against a fence, so it's screened from the neighbor behind you. And then there's greenery on the right side. It was getting dark when I was there, but...
Okay.
Yeah, so I think you're pretty sheltered, and I don't think you have a lot of choices of where you could move this if...
Correct.
If you had, it's tight. Your house is pretty tight back there, too. What goes in the shed? Just lawnmowers and storage and...
Basically, I just have my pool supplies and bowls and chairs and things like that.
All right, and there's no property you can purchase to bring this into conformance, right?
Correct.
If you had to relocate it, what would be the cost?
I didn't look into that. I'm unsure.
Could be, could be some time and material involved, right?
Correct.
I think it was on a base, if I recall. All right, any questions down here? Will?
No questions.
No.
No.
No questions.
All right, anybody in the public wish to be heard on this application? I'll look for a motion to close the public.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, finally, last case this evening is Nell C.L.L.C. for a variation of section 156-9 and 156-3621A. I'm gonna ask counsel, you gonna read all this? So you gonna eventually hit these points?
Yes.
Because it's a lot to read. All right, so I don't want to duplicate efforts.
You mean what the, what variances we're asking for?
Yes.
Yes, I will address everything.
All right, good evening. You're a lawyer, I take it?
Good evening, yes. Jody Cross from Zaren and Steinmeds.
Is anybody else gonna be speaking?
Only if you have questions, if you want to swear them and just to...
Yeah, I mean, just to cover, if, if, just in case.
Zach Pearson, Inside Engineering, Carmel, New York.
Raise your right hand. Swear to tell truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth, so help you God.
I do.
All right, what?
She's a lawyer for you.
Yeah. All right, I'm sorry.
We also have Mr. Albano here, the applicant.
All right, if he comes up, we'll swear him.
Sure. So we're here in connection with the Carmel Resident, Carmel Residential Townhomes Project at 119 Seminary Hill Road. We're seeking area development, area variances to effectuate the cluster development. So by way of background, Mr. Albano, as everyone knows, is a longtime resident of the area, including living in this particular neighborhood for decades. He's seeking to subdivide his property, that's 23.4 acres, for thirty-nine townhouse units with associated improvements, roads, recreation, et cetera. There will be three lots. Two of the lots are already improved with single-family homes, and those two homes are gonna stay. And then the third lot is the townhouse development. Recently, when the town rezoned, did their rezoning in March, this property was rezoned to Senior Multifamily Residential, the S.M.R. District, where this is an as-of-right use. He's presently before the planning board for subdivision and site plan approval. This was deemed an unlisted action under SECR, and the planning board is acting as lead agency. And on September eleventh, they did adopt a negative declaration determining that the project would have no potential for significant adverse environmental impact. But through the SECR process, as typically happens, the planning board and the applicant discussed the issues, and after the whole process was seen through, there were changes made to the design and layout to ameliorate potential impacts. And this included reducing originally, it was a fifty-unit plan, it's now thirty-nine units. Units were up on the Carmel Hills ridge line, and that was removed. And part of the design is that the buildings are clustered tightly together to minimize disturbance. So as of now, there's fifty-six percent of the property is being preserved. That's thirteen acres. And the clustering also ensures that the units are as far away from other residences as possible. It's more than 200 feet away from the closest unit to another residence. So that brings us why we're here tonight. We're seeking three variances. Two of the variances are required for lot two.
This is being presented to the public via the camera here, but you're welcome to come, you're welcome to come around if you'd like to see it. Do you guys have a second board at all that you can set up on?
This is the only one with this.
Okay.
Right?
So where is it?
Actually, if you guys want to just sit over here, I'll open it up to the public afterwards.
This is lot two?
Okay.
So is that currently Mr. Albano's house, lot two?
Hold on, hold on, hold on, hold on.
I can't, I can't let you guys speak until I swear again. I'm gonna let the application, applicant do his thing, but you can sit over there. do his thing, but you can sit over there so you can see the board. I'll welcome that.
So lot two is a single-family home. There's a minimum lot area of a hundred and twenty thousand square feet.
Can I just, can you maybe, as you do this, point out the different areas that you're discussing?
You could take the microphone off of that.
I have my handy helper. He's going to point to, we need to point to. So we're proposing a minimum lot area, sorry, just to take a step back. The minimum lot area in this zoning district for a single-family house is a hundred and twenty thousand square feet. We're proposing seventy-three thousand five hundred eighteen, which is a variance of forty-six thousand four hundred and eighty-two square feet, or thirty-eight point seven percent. We're also seeking a minimum side yard setback of fifty feet, where it's being shown. We're proposing thirty-two feet for a variance of eighteen feet, or thirty-six percent. With regard to lot three, which is where the multifamily units are, there's a building separation, minimum building separation in the code of fifty feet. We are proposing twenty feet for a variance of thirty feet, or sixty percent. So as the board knows, of course, in order to grant an area variance, there's a balancing of five factors to determine whether the benefit sought by the applicant outweighs any potential detriment to the community. So we set forth our argument in full in our letter, and, but we just want to point out that the benefit that's being sought is to develop this property in environmentally conscious manner, respecting the process undertaken at the planning board to reach this design that ended up getting the neg deck. So just to briefly go through the factors, and again, I refer you to our letter, which goes into them in more depth with case law, et cetera. So the first factor is whether there would be an adverse impact to the community character or the neighborhood. This property was just rezoned in March by the town. The town sees this property as, or the legislative board at least, saw this property as appropriate for the S M R District and for multifamily use. And that is consistent with the neighborhood. By tightly clustering the units, we're keeping, again, the closest residents is over two hundred feet away. It keeps it further away from the neighbors. And I do want to point out that under the current zoning, just on density alone, they, this property would be able to handle a hundred and fifty-five units, originally only proposed fifty, and that's been reduced back to the thirty-nine that we mentioned before. And there's actually language in the neg deck where the plan, the planning board said that subject to the issuance of these variances, this project, quote, "does not create a material conflict with the community's current development plans or goals."
Was there a give back for like some of that open space that I see to the right on the site plan?
So it wasn't, it wasn't a give back. It was, it had to do with visual analysis, right? So we had a fifty-unit layout where these units kept coming, and this is the top of the hill.
Right.
So we pulled back off the top of the hill and reduced down to thirty-nine units. We're now tucked behind the high point on the property.
So it's hidden by the hill from...
Correct.
And you won't see it when you're coming over looking past Polte?
Yeah, I mean, the planning board put us through the, we did a number of renditions of this, rendering some different vantage points across town.
Balloon tests.
Balloon tests, and the Polte.
Built them up in here.
Yeah, Polte Homes was, Route six and Polte Homes looking beyond that, that was the most sensitive one that the planning board was looking at.
Okay. Sorry, you can continue.
So the next factor is whether there are any feasible alternatives. Here, the benefit, again, to the applicant is maintaining this proposed layout, which can't be achieved other, by getting, without getting the variances. To avoid the sensitive ridge line, again, the project density was reduced. The road's been shortened to tightly cluster the units. And absent the requested variances, you would either have to create a longer road and additional disturbances, or reduce the density, which would, which could possibly render this unfeasible. So we would submit that there's no feasible alternative to these variances. This is the more environmentally conscious design. The next prong is whether or not, excuse me, the variances are substantial. So although the numbers may appear arguably to be large, we've got thirty-six percent, thirty-eight point seven percent, and sixty percent, that alone isn't enough to deem these substantial. The courts have held that you look at the totality of the circumstance. So even if the number is large, in a vacuum, the issue is whether or not it causes an impact to community character or the environment. So the courts have found that even when numbers are large, that alone is not a basis to find, to deny variance based on substantiality. The next factor is whether there'd be an adverse impact on the environment. Again, this has gone through significant review before the planning board, resulting in a negative declaration. The design, again, I keep saying it, but it is a design that's most protective of the environment. So granting the variances protects the environment rather than impacts it adversely. Last factor is whether the hardship self-created. The hardship here was created by the applicant's desire to provide this layout, which minimizes disturbances and ensures marketability as well. So, and it's also the result of a typical planning process. The planning board likes it clustered together, again, for the same reasons I keep mentioning. Results in no visual impacts. The applicant reduced the density by twenty percent to get this. So while the hardship may arguably, arguably be self-created, that factor alone statutorily is not enough to just deny the variances. So having gone through the five factors, which you could read more about in our letter, we submit that the benefit to the applicant will outweigh any potential detriment. And we request that the board, one, issue a negative declaration, because this is an unlisted coordinated review, and two, grant the requested variances. And we're here to answer any questions.
Okay. As to the distance between the buildings, right, that's twenty, twenty feet?
Correct.
I know there was an issue with another property in Carmel that, you know, we had gotten a letter from the fire department late, it was a late submission.
That's right.
For that application. So just to allay any concerns there, if the public has some concerns, the fire department actually was in support of that distance between the buildings that they'd be able to maintain a fire if, so just to pass that along to the public or anyone else.
And this was pushed tighter because we were asking it to come down off the, not wait, the planning board was asking it to come down off the hill for visual reasons.
Right, and it looks like he seeded some units to accommodate. So, you know, I think we can appreciate that.
And they gave up units.
Say again?
And they gave up units also.
That's what I'm saying, yeah, so. All right, board members.
Can I just answer my question?
Those thirty-nine units, they look all identical in square footage. Is that correct? Or Zach, maybe you understand.
According to the architecturals.
Yes.
They're three-bedroom, two-bedroom?
Three-bedroom.
They're all, they're all three-bedroom?
Yes.
Some buildings are five, and there's like a couple that are four, right?
Correct. Clusters, yes.
Very good. No other questions?
What is that, like in the bottom, the blue-green, like in between the trees, are those pools?
Yeah, there's a pool.
No, on the other side, go down on the bottom.
Keep going around the other way.
Yes.
Stormwater basin.
What?
Stormwater basin.
Okay, good. Whoever lived there would hate it if it was...
That's your runoff.
Stormwater treatment.
Yes.
Yeah, you're on a hill, so you got to do something with the water.
Got to capture it.
So it propels back into the ground. Oh, there is a pool, because in the one drawing I looked at, it didn't, I think it showed like a fire pit and...
In the quarter, right? Yeah, sport court.
Yeah. That's what's on the top of that square, right? So there's a pool in that, that area? Where that orange is?
Yes.
I think we had them put additional parking there, too, if I remember correctly.
Yeah, there's an additional cluster, like twelve, fifteen lots.
Additional parking for the clubhouse here. Clubhouse, pool, covered area, sport court, yeah.
The domestic water is from wells?
Public water.
It's public water?
Yes.
It's all sewer there, too?
Public water and sewer.
That's right.
Yep.
Thank you. Sylvia?
Nothing.
Jill?
Has emergency services looked at this plan? As John mentioned, we got a letter from...
We, as part of the planning board process, we did meet with the fire department, and there, there is a letter on the record that they've reviewed it.
There is?
It's part of the process.
Yeah, part of it.
Check the quantity also. That was all checked off.
Okay. Will, anything?
So how, how does this exactly benefit the community? Because I actually live on that road, so all the cars that go to that house are going to be going by my house every day. Like, I live on Seminary Hill Road, so I'm just kind of wondering what the actual benefit to the community is of having this.
Well, first of all, the issue for variance is the benefit to the applicant versus the detriment to the community. So is there a detriment to the community by having this? Things like traffic, et cetera, that was all vetted out in the planning process, and I don't respectfully believe that it's part of this variance process. So there was traffic, significant traffic studies done, and the determination that there was no adverse impact.
Okay.
Yeah, so that's more of a planning question.
Got it.
All right, that's it for the board. Any, anybody from the public wish to speak on this application? Please come in, make sure you...
Sign in.
Sign in with your name, address, and phone number.
Okay.
And then tell us your name and address, please.
My name is Leslie Klein. I live on Ten Mechanic Street in Carmel, New York.
Raise your right hand. Swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth, so help you God.
Yes, I do.
All right, go ahead.
So I was here for the whole planning, the zoning board meetings, and I was not in favor of this community. It's right behind my house. I don't think that you should give him a variance to narrow the property, because that just will open the floodgates down the road for him to build more, which I believe that he will. And also, I mean, I don't, where's this pool?
Where does this pool back up to?
Does it back up to my house? Because I hear Carl back there now, like excavating and everything else. So if you're thinking that it's not going to negatively impact the neighborhood, I think you're incorrect. Because if the pool is like right in my backyard, I'm going to hear all these people.
Would you mind pointing out the pool to her, if you don't mind?
No, I see where the pool is on there. I don't know where it backs up to. Like, where is that?
Mechanics.
I live on Mechanic Street. So...
Yeah, Mechanics.
Mechanic Street's here.
Yeah.
I don't know what house you are.
Hold on. I just want to ask the board if you want us to answer these questions.
If, if it doesn't mind if she's asking where, on a map that...
Can we look on the key map, too?
I'll give you a chance to respond. Counsel.
So this is my house, right here. This is your pool. This is my house.
This is a stormwater basin.
I understand, but all this property here, people are going to be like right in my backyard. This amount is technically right here.
You got to grab the microphone. It's being recorded.
So those cluster homes are in my backyard. We bought our house, a single-family house, watershed property, to protect us from this. We've paid taxes for forty-three years to protect us from this. And this is what we get. We get no protection from the board. We get no protection from the zoning board of appeals or the building department. I apologize to be disrespectful, but this did not come out until three days before the initial meeting, in August, when lots of people are on vacation. So I totally disapprove of this whole project, the pool behind my house, the cluster homes that I'm going to be able to see their roofs, the traffic that probably is going to end up on Mechanic Street as a thoroughfare to Stone Light, because they're not going to go all the way down Seminary to get to Stone Light. You know it, you know it, you know it.
They're going to be going by my house.
All right, please address the board, not...
But we all know it. So I am opposed to it. I don't want to give the variance. You're going to do what you're going to do, but I'm opposed.
Okay. Appreciate your thoughts.
And I just have another question. Have the traffic studies taken into account the building of the...
Well, that's a question for the applicant, so let's leave it with the public right now. So you can ask one, I'll let them come back up.
I can't ask the question.
It's disgraceful.
Anybody else wish to be heard?
Yeah.
Sir?
No, you got to swear.
Yeah, you got to state your name and address.
Bert Belasco, Seven Little Pond Lane, Carmel, New York.
Please speak into the microphone. Ma'am, if you're going to keep it up, I'm going to ask you to leave the room, okay? I've given you your time. Thank you.
Bert Belasco, Seven Little Pond Lane, Carmel, New York.
All right, raise your right hand. Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth, so help you God?
Yes, I do.
Go ahead.
All right. Take the microphone.
I'll take the microphone with you.
Take the mic, please. You can pull it off the pedestal. Thank you.
I would like you to show me, yeah. Seminary Hill Road, how, and...
It's right here.
Okay, so egress?
Egress and egress from this property is, is only off of Seminary Hill Road. There's an emergency gated emergency access that comes back to Albano Ridge for emergency access only. All traffic will be to Seminary Hill Road.
That's for fire trucks or...
Fire truck access, emergency access gated on both sides.
Okay, how does that impact, this is, this is an access to Little Pond Manor, twenty-one homes, right here. So you got twenty-one homes coming onto the road, and now you're adding another group of homes.
Right, right. So the traffic was extensively studied at the planning board for the, for the, just for the board's edification. Our traffic consultant went back and forth with the town for a couple of months, back and forth. There's traffic mitigation measures that are proposed as part of this project in the area along Seminary Hill Road. It was a focal point of that review with the, with the planning board. That and visual analysis were the two main items that we addressed back and forth.
Okay, the other question I have, have you looked at water pressure issues? They did some work back in this area, and it affected the water pressure for Little Pond Manor.
Right, so not that it has anything to do with the variance, but yes, we did at the planning board level.
That's a planning.
We are, we are looping the water main through from Seminary Hill Road through the site, through to Mechanic Street. That provides redundancy to the town system, as there's another way for water to get to and through it. The engineering department's reviewed it. A third part, or your town's consulting reviewing engineer has also reviewed it.
Okay. Those are my questions.
All right.
Thank you, sir.
Looping that increases quality and quantity for the water, so.
Sir, just write your name, address, phone number.
It's redundant now, the water.
Correct.
Okay.
But again, those are planning issues.
Planning board, yep. Anybody else wish to be heard on this application? All right, ma'am, do you want to come back up and answer? And Will, I think has further questions for you.
It sucks being short.
It's tough being tall.
My husband's six-three and a half, I'm five foot. So I think this board is aware of what this, the applications that are in front of the board. If you have questions for us about the variances, we're happy to answer them.
All right, Will, you had a question you want to ask? Okay. All right, at this point, I'll...
Thank you.
I'm the only one that lives in that area.
I know.
I'll look to close the public hearing on this application.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, at this point, there's no input from anybody on any application. We're going to adjudicate the cases this evening, starting with application number one. Mark Anthony, I'll look for a motion.
Zeus, you got seeker.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry, we have to do that.
There was a short form there.
Do we have to do that first, oh, Greg?
Uh, you want to make a seeker determination before you decide the application?
All right.
I'm going to take you through very quickly.
Was it filled in on there, Greg?
Hmm?
I thought it was filled in on the application already.
Did you part one?
No, it was for...
Oh, it was part one. The board does part two.
Yeah, 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 right.
Okay, so I'm going to take you through the questions, and then we'll see where you end up at the end, right? So with respect to this application, part two, first question is, will the action proposed create a material conflict with your existing adopted land-use create a material conflict with your existing adopted land use plan or zoning regulations?
No.
The answer is yes, yes, no, or small, or moderate to large, okay? You can say no if it's no, but those are the categories, all right?
Wait, what's, I'm sorry, say it again, Greg, I apologize.
It's, it's, your answer is no, or a small impact, or moderate to large, two categories of answer, all right? All right, so the question is, will the proposed action create a material conflict with an adopted land use plan or zoning regulations?
No.
Small, maybe small.
Will the proposed action result in a change in the use or intensity of land?
Intensity of the land?
Intensity of use.
No.
No, or small, or moderate to large.
No.
Will the proposed action impair the quality or character of the existing community?
Existing, because it's already there.
No.
I'm gonna say no.
Will the proposed action have an impact on environmental characters that cause the establishment of a critical environmental area C E A?
No.
Will the proposed action cause an increase, sorry, will the proposed action result in adverse change in the existing level of traffic or affect existing infrastructure for mass transit, biking, or walkway?
No.
Will the proposed action cause an increase in the use of energy and fails to incorporate reasonably available energy conservation or renewable energy opportunities?
No.
Will the proposed action impact existing public and private water supplies?
No.
No.
No, because it's already existing, that's...
Will the proposed action impact existing public, private wastewater treatment utilities?
No.
No.
Will the proposed action impair the character, quality of important historic, archaeological, architectural, or aesthetic resources?
No.
No.
Will the proposed action result in an adverse change to natural resources, wetlands, water bodies, groundwater, air quality, flora, and fauna?
No.
Will the proposed action result in an increase in the potential for erosion, flooding, or drainage problems?
No.
Will the proposed action create a hazard to environmental resources or...
No.
No.
All right, so you answered no, or small, to all of them, so you want to entertain